The regular council meeting, June the 5th, 2013. When I'll be called to order, and I ask the city clerk, please do the roll call.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Jen? Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Gearing?
Here.
Mayor Fife?
Here. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a guest here tonight. I don't have a bit of trouble with the first name. Lisa, what, how do you pronounce your name?
Kieza.
Okay, your own.
Okay. I am here this afternoon to assist the city with the interim financing for the H-2O grant that even been awarded from Commonwealth Finance. And I think that Kim, they have distributed to each of you in the packets a summary of the proposals that we received. We solicited proposals from five different banks, all of which responded, which is very nice, good news. And you'll see there, the summary of the terms that each one of us, or each bank responded with. They're all three-year loans. They're all more like a line of credit, so that you wouldn't have to borrow all the money at once and start paying interest on it. You just draw down when you need it, and when H-2O money comes in, you can actually pay it off, so it's shortening the interest expense that you might have on all of them. You'll see in the third column, that's titled rate, the various rates. All of them offer a fixed rate, some offer a variable rate, if you were interested in doing that, but sort of the rates are subbed slightly up towards, it looks like one there. There's one that's the lowest. The interest payments are different. One of them's at maturity, several are monthly, and one is quarterly. Some have fees and others do not.
What's the yearly rate?
Well, they range from 190, or I'm sorry, 202 for First Commonwealth Bank, to a lower 1.3 for Scott.
That's any.
That's any, okay.
Anyone want to ask her any questions?
Mayor? I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
To do what?
Go into executive session for legal matters.
All right. You have a second.
I'll second, I guess.
Okay.
You want to do that now?
Yeah.
Let me take a vote on the motion, Mr. Michael, for executive session. Joe, or Mr. Palumbo?
Can we table this one? Should we listen to her presentation, because it might bring up some other things? Not that we're going to ask any questions, we don't necessarily, if you think there's something there, but we should, maybe it'll shed light if we listen to what she has to say before we go into executive session.
One thing, that it's permanent.
We already have a motion on.
Didn't you make a motion and you voted yes?
Yeah.
You'd be the next one.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
And Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council, the City of Uniontown. Council convenes in the executive session. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
And Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo, John Oden?
John Oden, next, go.
There are two lots within Craig Meadows that are part of the City of Uniontown. The rest of the development is in South Union Township. One of those two lots that are vacant now, that are in the city, was actually purchased by, for a wounded veteran to build a home, by the Homes for Soldiers, I believe it is, Homes for our troops. During their excavation, they discovered an unknown 36-inch stormwater pipe that actually takes the water from the shopping center, stormwater maintenance pond, and some other drainage structures. And prior to the development, discharged into a natural drainage area that apparently was filled out, or piped at some point in the past during the development. No recorded stormwater easement, stormpipe easements, any type of easements recorded across the lot at all. There was a request made by the organization building the home for the, for not only the city, but for South Union Township, to participate with the cost of relocating that storm sewer, that 36-inch storm sewer line that basically bisects diagonally across the lot that's going to be built. Again, there's no obligation on the city's part, from my perspective. It wasn't in the city easement, it wasn't in the recorded easement, but it does make the lot currently unbuildable. There is a resolve to the situation up there that would require approximately 180 feet of pipe and three inlets to reroute the drainage around the buildable pad for the home. And, you know, it's completely, in my opinion, J.W., your solicitor may have another opinion, but in my opinion, it's completely city council's decision as to whether or not they can afford to contribute something to the project.
Where's the location?
It's on Paul, it's at the cul-de-sac of Paul Court. There's two lots at the end of there that were vacant and have been vacant for 20 years.
Right behind Union Street.
And Craig Meadows.
It's in Craig Meadows.
Okay.
Paul Court, is it?
That's close to...
Their first church.
If you're, if you're standing on the road behind the shopping center and you look down into Craig Meadows, that's Paul Court. That's the two vacant lots.
Okay.
So.
Other than...
I mean, it's right down the bottom of the slope of Union Street. So, bottom of the hill. So, I mean, I know, I know they made a formal request to South Union and to the city for its insistence, and really, it's, you know, the council's decision as to what they want to do, if they want to do anything. Your obligation, in my opinion, your obligation is, you have no obligation to do anything. So, and with the financial situation the city's in, you may not be able to afford to do so.
What is the cost, Joe?
I believe the contractor gave us an estimated cost that they had from a private contractor of around $19,500 to do the work. My estimate, working with Phil, knowing what you guys paid for material, the material cost is about $8,500.
You know what I think? I would hate to sit here and obligate 12,000 or 14,000 people in this city. I think that if you want to give some money to it as an individual, stand up and be counted. Show them what you got. But for me to take money out of your pocket and put it into somebody else, I don't really think that I have the right to do that. But maybe J.W. could address it.
I think that the points that the mayor's making is pertinent from a legal standpoint. This sounds like a wonderful cause, for sure.
Absolutely.
But we are not dealing with our money, as the city, we're dealing with taxpayer money. And I'm not aware of any authority which allows the city to make it. And this sounds to me, John, like based on what you're saying, it's essentially a donation. I mean, it doesn't really benefit the residents of the City of Union Town other than this one particular parcel. Am I pretty much on the...
That's correct. I mean, it's basically not your problem.
Yeah, typically, you know, when you use taxpayer money, you're required to do it in some way that is for the public good, or to benefit the citizens who are paying that tax money into the cause. Like I said, I'm not aware of any authority which would permit that. I am aware that there is a particular statute, which does, and some case law, that does forbid the use, specifically forbid the use of sewer funds for any purpose other than the installation, planning, construction, improvement, or replacement of a sewer system. That's 53 burdens, 2292. That's for a sewer system. It sets very, very narrow parameters on how sewage funds, if there is a sewage fund, how that money is to be spent, and that's, that's it. And when you're talking about, you know, the improvement, replacement, you know, or installation, planning, construction of a sewer system, you're talking about something that benefits the entire sewer system. In other words, the entire city. And I'm just not hearing that here, and I think that's what creates the complication with us giving money to the cause.
And then you have to check the budget too, because we're not budgeting for anything like that.
And then there's budget to consider, right.
And the thing with the sewer fund is, it's, that's the sanitary sewer system. We're talking about a storm sewer pipe there, so it's not even part of the sanitary sewer system.
Right. My question to John right now would be, we are talking about a city line?
The two lots, there is two lots that are vacant. Both of those lots are in the City of Union Town.
Okay, and the 36-inch line is, I guess, our line?
No.
No? Don't know.
There's no evidence, there's no evidence that has been presented that it is your line.
Is it connected to our system?
It's connected to your system, because the system that it connects to is a culvert pipe that drains that the Union Town Shopping Center's storm sewer system pond, it's in the back there, connects into that system. There are inlets on Union Street that discharge into what, you know, if you look at a USGS map back in the early 70s, there was a natural drainage channel there. So, your system discharged into a natural drainage channel that the developer, without anybody's knowledge, extended.
Okay.
Doesn't mean a true pipe, doesn't mean a true system.
Now, don't say the South Union also.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. So, there is a way though, even if, without our funds, if someone's, my question then, if someone's redirecting this and relocating this, no matter who pays for it, okay, because it's part of our system, we would still have to give, do we then still have to give permission for, for the relocation, no matter who pays for it?
Yes. And South Union Township after, so. And I don't foresee that being a problem. I mean, the relocation is just basically a loop around the house. It's just some pipe to loop it around the house.
So the house still settle the drain?
Exactly.
Okay.
They don't allow...
There's no change in the hydraulics of the system whatsoever.
Okay. And then, would there have, again, because there isn't an existing easement, where would the new easement then be in a relocation that would be recorded?
They would have, they would have to basically follow the process and record that easement so that there would be an easement for any future work that would need to be done on that pipe. But you, the City of Union Town still doesn't own the system at that point. It's still a private line.
Would that pipe still be on their lot? Just in a different place on their lot?
That's correct.
Since this isn't on the agenda anywhere, just John's presentation, should, could, could we make a, a motion to grant permission for the, for the owner to, to be able to, to relocate the line and still connect the thing, since John says that we have to give him permission to do that anyway, no matter who's paying for it?
Would there have to be an application for that?
Yeah, there would have to be an application. They, through the engineers.
So it's all premature then?
Yeah.
With the permit?
You know.
That part won't be a problem.
No, we can handle that in the office to make sure that there's no violations to the clean stream laws, that there's no...
And there will be a tap in too.
Yeah, I mean, you'd probably...
That's a sanitary sewer duct.
Right, sewer, there'll be a tap in.
They'd have to make an application, you'd have to do a dye test, have a DEP look at it, you know, all those things, right?
No, not for the sanitary sewer duct, because it's public system, so.
Oh, okay.
They're direct, it's a direct public system.
And the others are stormwater.
The others are stormwater.
So they do this donation, I mean, this dedication for nothing, that, is what you're saying? They can't, they can't stay there unless this happens, right? Can't build there?
They have to re, in order to build the home, they have to relocate the pipe. So, I'm not saying they did it for nothing. I think they truly are going to build the home, just a matter of...
Not where?
Yeah. I don't believe this is going to stop them.
Okay.
All right, thank you, John. Any comments on any of the agenda items? If not, you can begin with resolutions.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town to inspect the report of the treasures for the month of May 2013, be in the same as hereby accepted and promoted.
No comment.
Toby?
No comments.
Mr. Gearing?
This is the treasures report. We did get an update. There is a, I did talk to Mr. Ducetti in his office, and the, again, the, on the interest and rents number isn't the same as it was in April because of a couple of clerical alterations that were made. But I do think that, you know, I'm going to be voting no, because, because there's no notes on when we're changing numbers or anything, that we're not adopting the treasures report in a proper fashion.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Fife?
Absolutely yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town to hereby accept the minutes of the May 8, 2013 regular council meeting.
No comment.
Toby?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, motions that we have at the table, should those be part of the minutes?
No.
Yeah, we're, we're missing a motion in the minutes from last month's meeting.
Which motion are we missing?
Uh, the, there was a motion, there was a motion made, let's just say between 78 and 80. Well, that, I'd have to go back and review, review things, but there were two things that were voted on, and we had, and Mr. Michael had to abstain from, from voting, and only one of them is currently listed.
I mean, you know, you could always make a motion to amend the minutes if, if you knew what, what was missing, but, you know.
He abstained twice, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I remember that he abstained once and why, but I don't remember, I mean, I don't remember. Like I said, if you did, you could make a motion to amend it.
Guy didn't get a chance to go and review everything.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
And Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town. Council hereby directs the Director for Council Finance to maintain the following invoices for services rendered for products for a store for the City of Union Town, for the May 2013 invoices. In the general fund, $150,385.37. Sewer, $40,668.19, which includes $2,502.09 transportation recycling. Recreation, $1,904.80. Recycling, $858.91. Highway, $8,596.52. Library, $709.23. Off-street, $12,312.72. And community development, $377.12.
No comment.
Toby?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
No comments.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt ordinance number 1670, bill number 1689, and ordinance of City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, placing a motor vehicle weight limitation restriction on Full Spring Street from the North Union, City of Union Town, Lawrence, Jefferson Street.
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
No comment.
This is a, I'm sorry, this is the second reading, right? Because we're on both of them.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt ordinance number 1671, bill number 1690, and ordinance of City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, placing a motor vehicle weight limitation restriction on Jefferson Street Bridge.
No comment.
Toby?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
Only, again, that this is the second reading.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt ordinance number 1671, bill number 1690, and ordinance of City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, placing a motor vehicle weight limitation restriction on Jefferson Street Bridge.
No comment.
Toby?
No comment.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, only, again, that this is the second reading.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, ordinance number 1672, and ordinance of City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, to consider the adoption of a debt ordinance authorizing non-electoral debt in the maximum principal amount of $750,000.
Mr. Michael?
No comment. We have to pick a bank, right? Mayor, I think you have to ask a motion.
For which, um, proposal you're going to vote on.
All right, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make one.
Second?
Which bank?
To go with the First National Bank, we went with First National?
First National. I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to vote on First National Bank, as the one, the proposal accepted for this debt ordinance, Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
I'll first make a comment that there was another proposal that's out there that does have a lower interest rate. That was a clerical error that we missed last month, and that's, that's why we're redoing this at, at the moment, and so I'm going to vote no.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
This, okay, so this ordinance is not redoing. The motion is to redo last month, but this ordinance is for the adoption of the debt ordinance, whatever one you get. So...
We've already voted on First National.
Right, so this ordinance will be a vote for accepting the debt ordinance with First National Bank.
Okay.
Do you have some amendments?
I have.
You mean that we need to read all this before we can vote?
Just the caption that I just read to you.
Oh, okay.
This is what we had to adopt. We had to decide which bank before we adopted it.
This debt ordinance actually contains the things that are required by the Local Government Unit Data Act.
And what does it really say?
It says that you're authorizing the issuance of the city's general application note in an amount up to $750,000, and you're accepting the proposal for First National Bank.
And this would be read no matter what bank we did it with?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Mayor, may I ask a question again? Because it's part of the closing documentation on here that this is, has to have tax exempt status?
Right.
Does this have tax exempt status?
Yes, yes, yes. That's my job, to make sure that that...
Well, I was just confirming, so when we were going over this last month, that was still something that was up in the air, because their interest rate was even contingent upon that, and that's one of the recommend, qualifications or requirements that our solicitor at the closing supply an opinion letter of tax exempt status. We can take care of that.
Are we taking the vote down there? Mr. Michael voted. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes.
And Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to inspect the proposals submitted by the only environmental services slash advanced disposal, to extend their existing contract with the City of Union Town for crashing or under the existing terms for June 2014.
No interest.
Right.
What's your take on this? What is your take on this? I know we sat through a couple of meetings. Well, I think that they have a little problem that they had to change over, but I think they're really coming around and...
What do you need change over?
It's a whole lot that...
They've been bought out. Oh, they are? Yeah. The old ones have been bought out, they're not called advanced disposal.
They had a big transition to go through, and they're getting it all together. I went to several meetings over it.
So you suggest that we're going to do this, Mayor?
I think so, yes. Believe me, I hauled it over for nine weeks.
Does the name change it too? The old one's changed? It already has. If you look at the dumpsters around town, they've been A.O.
If you look at the dumpsters around town, they've been A on...
Yeah, I saw.
Comment?
No comment.
Comment?
My comment is similar to the one I made last year. I don't think that we can renew this contract. And I think it needs to go back out for bid. Especially since we're not even dealing with the same company that we were dealing with originally.
I think they're the same.
Well, they're fulfilling their obligations.
Same people, right?
I don't think, I don't think that's, I know we talked about this last year when we did this. And I have a little memo here. The reason I don't think that's the case is because the contract that we did bid and that we did accept had a provision in it that stated that the city can elect to extend the agreement without submitting it for a proposal to other sanitation collections.
But it was only an extension for one year.
But after that...
No, it's perpetual.
No, after that, if they ask us within 30 days of the deadline, then it's up to council to define. In the first year of the extension, it's probably council's discretion. After that, they can request if they do within 30 days and council can vote on it.
Right, and that provision is perpetual. It doesn't change.
Right, right.
At any, you know, as long as we keep extending the agreement, it keeps extending that option. In other words, that's what I mean by perpetual.
Now we vote it.
Mr. Michael?
But again, even, even the letter that we received
What, what?
From, from them is, that we were just given
Toby?
Wasn't dated 30 days even prior to this. It was just last week.
It's 30 days in advance of the end of their contract. Mr. Palumbo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Definitely not, I don't believe they were...
Definitely yes.
We are thought by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hereby appoint Mark Grayson to serve on the City of Uniontown Fire Civil Service Commission effective June 13, 2013, with the term to expire June 13, 2017.
No comment. Toby?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
We are thought by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Scott Chapel as a part-time code enforcement officer for property maintenance for up to 30 hours a week at a starting salary of $10 per hour to be effective immediately.
Mr. Michael?
I met with this gentleman last week. I saw him, the chief. He has annual education. He is, it says on his resume, his residence is in Barstow, but he actually stays in Brownsville as well. And he has, he has the desire to do the job and I think we should probably give him a shot. He, I think he knows what he's doing.
Well, the price is right. And he has the, he's certified?
He's got a lot of background in doing that, because he's got some certification. He's familiar with being...
He what, he teaches?
He teaches different classes.
Well, you met with him, you recommended?
Yes. It doesn't list what?
Toby?
Under certifications in the beginning, it says A W S certified, all those certifications.
But you got a good feel on the interview?
Yes, sir.
And the chief was in it. Mr. Gearing?
Do you have any questions?
No.
Is, is this for a code enforcement officer or just another property maintenance official?
It's the same thing.
No, they're not the same thing.
It's property maintenance.
Okay, so for, for hiring another property maintenance official?
It's replacing Mr. Henderson.
Okay, I was going to say, did somebody step down because we already have two, two that were on hire?
Mr. Henderson.
Okay. Has he submitted a resignation?
Please, sir.
We might finally get somebody that can get in Mr. Gearing's building.
You're in my building every year, Mayor.
How was I aware of that?
Well...
Mr. Michael?
You should be more informed.
Maybe you could inform me.
I'd like to have my question answered. Did Mr. Henderson retire?
He did.
Okay.
For the third time, Mr. Michael?
Excuse me, he runs. Yes.
Mr. Gearing resides over the council, didn't he tell you?
Well, I thought we were also using the fire department as well to do some of this work.
Mr. Palumbo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No, I didn't even get to ask all of, all of my questions on whether or not the job was posted or anything, so I'll just vote no.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
It was posted, I think.
We are thought by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the City of Uniontown's application for recycling grant funding from the Department of Environmental Protection under section 902 of Act 101 in the amount of $277,778 for the following equipment to use in the Union Town and by the center located at 105 Romeo Lane, Union Town for a compost grinder, wood chipper, and surveillance camera.
Phil, what does that include? That way we won't have Mr. Gearing asking 100 questions.
As a filter grinder, we have a grinder down there to pick up the 30-inch logs, tree limbs, and parts. And we, we have an annual pickup, weekly pickup Monday and Friday for all bags, leaves, grass, South Union shares in depth with us there, and also Smithfield. This grant, we, we seek some quotes. The lowest quote came in at $321,000. So the grant will ultimately pay for the whole machine.
Will that take care of that high lift?
The high lift and a different grant coming from...
But it'll be, it'll be coming, Ford's coming.
Yeah, it's a four-year-old high lift that'll be Ford coming to the site.
Okay. Is this, is this on our property or is this at the...
That's on a city property, but it's a South Union share of Smithfield.
That's behind the wood line and all that?
Yeah.
Right.
And we're going to keep the program going, we need this equipment. The equipment that we're replacing is 17 years old, it's, it's ruined. It was $72,000 to repair. And that's not touching above that.
We're in sports, you're running the drive.
Oh, yeah, I am, yeah, I got you.
Side going, please.
Toby?
No question.
Mr. Gearing?
Thank you for your information, Phil.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
We are thought by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify the poll council taken on May 29, 2013, to authorize solicitor J. David Eddie to file an appeal to the Union Town zoning hearing board's finding and opinion dated May 2, 2013, along with a motion to remand the match to the zoning hearing board for further consideration.
Uh, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Could you talk on this just for a minute so we don't get tied up in here for a week?
Since there's some legalities, it would probably be a little better if you had me addressed it.
In summary, the zoning hearing board, the city zoning hearing board, which is an arm of ours, even though we don't directly control them...
We just deploy them.
Right. They had a hearing at the end of April on a request for a variance asked for by the city mission. They made a decision denying that variance, which for a number of reasons may have had an adverse impact on the city. We had to file an appeal to that to, to get it back to the board because I believe, among other things, they misunderstood some of the evidence that was presented in the variance request. Because the appeal period, by the time we became aware of this and got adequate information to understand it, the appeal period would have expired before we could have had a meeting. So essentially, it required immediate action. And so, Kim took a poll with council and I'm not, I don't know which three councilmen she, she talked to, but I know the three approved it. And I suggested that we maybe have a ratification of that at the, the open council meeting. Let everybody who may not know, know what's going on, what happened, what we did and why we had to do it.
What were the various words?
Uh, it was a request by the city mission. They, they're, through federal grants, they're attempting to build a six-unit apartment dwelling on Knight Avenue. They were asking for a dimensional variance because the way the building's designed, we have a, a use allowance of 18,000 square feet under the, under the unit. And, well, we have a, we strike that. We have a use allowance for apartments of 3,000 square feet per unit. Ergo, constructing six units would require them to have 18,000 square feet to utilize for that structure. The property that the city mission owns and wanted to build on contains only 16,500 feet. So in order to build all six units, which they were required to do, is a condition of their grant, they needed a 1,500 square foot variance in order to build it. I think that when the zoning hearing board got it, if you look at their opinion, they construed the presentation to mean, they, they basically thought that they were asking for 1,500 square feet
Per unit.
Per unit for a total of 9,000 square feet, which would be half of the use allowance.
In fact, it was only 1,500.
In fact, it was only 1,500. So in order to give the zoning hearing board an opportunity to correct that, an appeal had to be filed. And as I said, it had to be done immediately because there were, by the time we realized this, there were only a couple of days left to appeal because those appeals are time-sensitive. You only have 30 days to appeal to the court of common pleas or else an appeal can't be taken. So that's why we did what we did.
And also was looking for a setback variance as well.
Uh, yeah, but the setback variance wasn't a major factor in the board's decision. I don't recall offhand. It was, they were only asking for either 10 or 12 feet. And the existing property in the area had, some of the existing properties had setbacks that coincided with that. So I, I don't think that was a basis, a basis or a major basis for...
What is your property function?
Who's?
The city mission's here at that building, independent living.
It's an independent living facility.
It's not a halfway house, really?
No, no, it's, it's not, it's not a halfway house rehab. It's...
Because people think that.
They have, they have one similar on South Alberta, right in front of it.
Down in Galveston.
Yeah, but, but I think this one's going to be kind of like the one on South Alberta, right, Jason?
Well, it's actually going to be up behind it.
Yeah, right behind it, but similar and, and very clean, because I kind of live in that neighborhood, very clean. I think it's helped the neighborhood, put it on, and I think it'll help the neighborhood more.
And there really isn't another simple way that you can stop somebody from building, is there, Jason? According to, I mean...
I have an underwear.
Huh?
I have an underwear.
What they need is the 1,500, what, feet variance?
15, yeah, 1,500.
To accommodate the whole project.
1,500 square feet allows them to build six units instead of five and a half. And they can't, they have funding that's very specific to this project via the grants that they've got. And they're not, they're, they're very limited in the, my understanding of it is, due to their grants, they're very limited in the alterations they can make to the design. They're, they're under some constraints with the conditions of the grant funding. And there's a lot they can do to manipulate the design to fit it in. That's why they're asking for the variance.
Right. Okay. No comment. Toby?
No comment.
Gearing?
You're, you're saying that square footage of the lot, JW, is 16,500?
No, the square footed, yeah, the square footage of the lot, 16,500. And they would need, if they...
Which is why it's a 1,500 square foot.
Right. They would need, they would need, it's 3,000 per unit when you build an apartment. You have to have a minimum 3,000 per apartment.
Yeah.
They can't do that and build six, and they have to build six from their grant requirements.
They may be more specific.
So they need the extra 1,500 or else they can only build five and a half.
Well, because as, as this is written, it says that it's looking to take it from 3,000 down to 1,500.
For one unit? For one unit out of the, out of the six.
Well, again, at 1,500 for one unit, you're going to build six units, that's 9,000 square feet of, of lot space that you need, which is why I'm trying to clarify
No, that's, see, that's the way that, that's the way the hearing board interpreted. That's what they're asking for. They're asking 1,500 total, not per unit.
Well, that's the reason why I'm clarifying with you, because we don't have a map there that says what the size of the lot is.
Well, their council wrote a letter, I, I haven't had a chance to review a transcript, but I've spoken to their local council and their, their general counsel, and they've, they've provided documentation in a letter. It appears from that, they're very, very clear on that point, that it's only 1,500 square feet total, that it's not 9,000 square feet. The board thought it was 9,000, which would be half of the usage allowance. That, that would not be a de minimis request.
Yeah.
But 1,500 is a fairly de minimis request. I mean, that, that changes the ballgame.
And, and the front yard setback is going from 25 feet to 14 feet.
Yeah, so it's a nine-foot, not 10 or 12, but it's nine-foot, which is, that's fairly de minimis too. But I think it's just a matter of...
And what you're trying to do is, is put this back in the hands
Of the zoning hearing board, so that they can understand exactly what they're requesting because I think they misunderstood it the first time.
Well, okay.
Will this property be on the pass rules?
This property? Yes, it will. This is not, that's another thing to mention, this is...
You're sure?
Positive. This is not a tax-exempt entity that will, that will be paying tax, property tax.
This, this isn't to override the zoning hearing board's decision?
No, it's just to allow them a chance to reconsider it based on a, a different presentation of the evidence that makes them understand what it is better. I, I don't know if it was...
Well, there's probably another authority that could override all of this.
Well, yeah.
If it was turned down, they could take the court.
I, I think that, and like I said, it's hard for me...
You don't have to grant exceptions, Mayor, in variances. That's why you have votes.
It's hard for me to...
Well, that's right. I didn't know that.
Well, now you do.
Yeah.
Maybe.
It's, it's hard for me to judge whether or not a court will return because I haven't seen a transcript. But based on my understanding of it, it sounds like if this did go to a full-blown appeal, the court...
Could we vote on it, please?
Okay.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Uh, yes, I'll give the zoning hearing board another opportunity to do their job.
Mayor Fife?
Yes.
Jason, you got something else, right?
Police report was? Police report standpoint, does that answer?
Yes.
Uh, Union Town Police Department answered 1,047 calls in the month of May. So made a total of 88 arrests, issued 126 traffic citations. You know, we, the, there has been a clear uptick in the call volume within the police department as is typical of the beginning of summer in the warmer days. And we are doing everything we can to remain proactive while at the same time answering all the calls for service that come in.
Our chief out there?
Hello, Mayor.
Very good.
I am. Everything's good, I got no complaints. Everybody's happy, we got the roof, it's almost completed, East End Fire Station, they've done some work. Doing a great job, I mean, they drive clear from South Park every day, but it'll be done in about three days, so they got a little bit of touch-up to do. But other than that, I'm really pleased with the work they're going up there. I have no complaints.
Very good. John?
Unless you guys have any questions, the only thing I've got to, to report is that we are moving forward with the contract for the relining of the sanitary sewer system through the city. The contractor will probably be, we're receiving some bills right now, he'll probably be moving on site to begin setting up bypass pumping within the next two weeks. So if the residents of the city see some strange vehicles moving into town and setting up some large pumps and things like that, it's associated with this project. If everything works out well, project should be completed before the first part of November.
Great.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, the council adjourns to meet Wednesday, July 3, 2013, at 4:30 PM. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor fight?
Yes.